All right, we're starting over here.
Meeting start.
Okay. For, uh...
Just start talking. Just start talking.
I guess I need one of those too.
Okay, following the agenda. So... Okay, everything... What we'll do is, I'll make a motion. And we'll go through the vote, pledge, no more than silence. Prior to the budget hearing, I'll make a motion to change the order of business to handle the organizational business. All right?
Do we have to do it in the meeting?
Right, but I'd like to have a quick discussion after I get through the...
We'll do it in caucus, but officially on the record.
It's kind of strong. Okay. Okay, then we have the budget hearing for approval of minutes, the October 21st minutes I have for approval. All right. We'll have the public hearing. Once that's over, local laws, local law F.
Whoa, 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 we're gonna have the public hearing and then the public comment.
Oh, right, 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 sorry about that.
Then approval minutes, that's what it says.
Right, right. I'm kind of trying to jet through it instead.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Instead of going... Yes, what Judy said. That's the proper order of things. It's me trying to rush through. Don't worry about it.
The local law?
All right. The local laws. Mr. Conti's local law F will be introduced, it'll be an introduction. He'll go to council operations. Local laws held, they're held. Moving on to ordinances introduced. There are five of them, there are Ms. Doche's.
You mean finance?
At the request of finance.
At the request of finance, that's correct. Okay. That'll go to finance. Ordinances held are held. On to resolutions introduced. So we have seventy-three, one-eleven, nineteen R by Ms. Love. That'll be a pass. Next is seventy-four, one-eleven, nineteen R by Mrs. Fahy.
That's a whole.
That's a whole. Did I miss? Okay. Goes to plan. Do you care?
Goes to planning.
Goes to planning. Yeah. Okay, so that goes to planning. Next is Resolution Seventy-five, one-eleven, nineteen R by Ms. Doche. That will be going to the Housing and Community Development Committee for discussion. Actually, we scheduled that meeting, it's for November twentieth.
Well, the mayor's office...
They'll come and talk to me.
Okay.
So this one is seventy-five, one-one-one, the chair's duty is going where?
To housing, the housing committee.
Housing committee.
And during that meeting, the mayor, folks from the administration, the mayor's office will come. And, uh... And have some, it's the twentieth of November.
The twentieth of November?
Yeah.
Can we make sure that you never set spoke also could notify that meeting?
I'll look back.
Yeah, it was like the last meeting.
I mean, you can, there's a couple people who can identify, mark of it and whatever.
Yeah. United tenants folks. Okay, so that was it for resolutions.
United tenants.
For resolutions introduced, right?
For resolutions introduced. Onto resolutions held. They're held with the exception of number four, number six. Number four by Mrs. Pleers will be a pass. And that's the Housing Authority's scholarship program. And number six will be a pass also, that was just discussed in the finance committee meeting.
Passed out with a positive recommendation.
Since I was like, can I ask a quick question about that? Is this the confidential secretary? Okay. And so is it in line with, is adjustment in line with other confidential assistants or it's...
They vary, but it's not excessive in terms of the, you know, the top. A lot of them are in the forties.
Okay.
Forty to forty-eight. So I think there's a couple that are even in the fifties.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, my concern is confidential secretary see this raised, like, well, I do that too, why don't I get it?
This seems like a lot of workload she's picking up with.
Yeah, that's what they said. Okay. All right.
It's quite a substantial task.
Sounds good. That was it. I was lazy, so I couldn't ask a question. All right, that's it for the agenda. So just have a little conversation about the leadership positions.
Is that where you're adjourned in the meeting?
Yeah. Can't be, should it not be a part of the meeting?
No, it should be.
I'm just checking.
Okay, so for, I'd like to be president pro temp. I'd like to continue in this role. Mostly I talk to, to ask for support. So anyone have a question, any questions for me or...
Or anybody else interested?
Anyone, anyone else interested?
I guess I asked for nominations.
No, no. It's true. Are you putting your name in the...
I'm putting my name in.
Okay, I can't tell if you're joking or not.
From president, that's majority leader, right?
For president, okay. So just a quick, simple show of hands for, I don't know, who supports?
I support Kelly.
More women, yeah, because this is...
Yeah, which...
Can I just ask a question? Who's or anti-president?
Right, that's what I'm asking.
But Tom is the only one that had a hand, I mean...
Yeah, that's it.
And Kelly.
For President Pro Tem we're talking about right now. And he showed his interest and Tom showed his interest. Is there anybody else, right?
Anyone else? Simple show of hands. What members support me?
Oh, wait, so it's a discussion?
I think it goes to allow two minutes.
Oh, I get, oh, I see what you're saying. No, no, right, 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 I got you, yeah. So, right, so I've been a part of leadership for the last two years. I think I got good work...
How many years in the council now?
Oh, it's my sixth, going into seventh year on the council, so I got a good working relationship with all the members. I think I'm fair, reasonable, sane. I've got a pretty good working relationship with the city's administration also. And I love this city and this body. So, any questions?
Can you talk about the time commitment, Kelly?
Yes, yes, I'm able to commit the time to fill a position. I've been doing the meetings with a previous president pro temp for the last two years. So time commitment isn't an issue. I'm committed to that. I can make the meetings in any obligations for the position. Anyone have any questions for me?
I'd just like to say, I think that is an important part of the job, the commitment to, the commitment to the job at the time. I mean, I know what Richard's done in the past, a lot of committee meetings, leadership meetings, and above and beyond. There is a time commitment, that's why I'm not interested.
Can you clarify what the role entails, just so everybody is clear? For those who haven't been behind the scenes, what is expected of the...
Probably the previous president pro temp can speak best to that, but of course, scheduling meetings. I mean, most of the stuff is in our rules, picking the committees, participating in the E and A process, leadership meetings. I'm just trying to think of...
Trying to get our message, our message to the leadership means that's very important to it.
Also, being a conduit between the leadership in the mayor's office and us, our body. You know, communicating our wants, needs, desires to them. So I'd say that's... And, Richard? Right, right. Right, the city clerk, our attorney that we're in the process of hiring, and simul legislative aide, so...
So I think Michelle should have a voice in this. Going again.
Jack? With, I mean, it varies. In the leadership position, I mean, we have, we have two, at this point, I remember I was the majority leader. We had, I mean, the meetings, the leadership meetings, there's only, we had a leadership meeting the Tuesday prior to the Wednesday caucus. So that wasn't, but again, that's... The administration.
Yeah, that was. Just what are some of the plus greatest challenges that you've had in the past in the pretty big majority leadership meetings? And what do you find is different?
Yeah, well, I think for the first year or so, the mayor wasn't really participating. So that was, for me, I had like certain expectations for going into this leadership role and, you know, working. It wasn't until recently that the mayor actually started participating. I'm sure, I mean, by on her own, directly, through her staff, they were there, chief of staff and deputy. They were a part of those meetings, but I thought I was getting into it to deal directly with the mayor, have conversations with the mayor, which we do now. So that, that was a frustration, because I just, and I also kind of felt like that we weren't trusted. You know, the administration didn't trust us. I mean, we're supposed to be working together, so we need, there's certain information we need. I would need, or we needed as leadership in order to communicate that with you all. I think you were thinking that maybe some of the members had a notion that we weren't sharing something and stuff wasn't getting out. But that wasn't it. We just went through, we were going through the agenda, and that was the extent of it. I'd like to see moving forward that change, a little more trust, communication. I actually plan on speaking and interacting, communicating more with members to get, you know, what do you need? What do you need, and how can I help you get there?
And I think it's very important to have that level-headedness in there, okay? Because I know when we used to have meetings, but then the mayor's staff, okay? Remember some of those, and we break down and then some just went, and then it canceled then, because they just got so, I don't know, you know?
Right, yeah, I know, I'm like...
Kelly, so when chairs ask for information from different departments and they don't get it, what are you prepared to do to support chairs that request information and for whatever reason they don't get it?
I'll go, I'll go and request it. The thing is, we, we're doing the people's work. We, but not only that, we have a right to that information. To do our jobs, we need that information. So I'm, you know, if a member's or chairs having trouble getting information, you know, I'll, I'll go to bat and have conversations with the administration to try and get those. Sorry about that, Tom.
Sure. I look at the city as a brand. The city of Albany is a brand that we all represent. This has been a rough couple of weeks, when, you know, I was at a town when Richard resigned. I know there's four people that are looking to go for the majority. And I feel the council right now is not unified. And I thought a lot over the weekend, I didn't talk to anybody about this except for my wife. And I thought like that, if I was in this position, and I have Kelly there as majority leader, it would be more of an equal teamwork. And that it would, we wouldn't have this division for the majority leader, which we couldn't end up with tonight anymore. So my thoughts were, what way could be the less impact on the council? You know, how many people will hate me for stepping up or not voting for them? So, I mean, I told Kelly I was supporting. And like I said, over the weekend, I really did a lot of soul searching. I actually called the Wusum because I was so tore up about the whole thing with this... Yeah, I didn't tell him that.
You're hysterical. Call me, because I was, what you're doing is...
Well, seriously, I think I could do the job, probably have my uni job, work at the university and do this. This would become almost like a full-time job. And we could work for it. I am relatively new, have just almost two years' experience. But I know how to make a teamwork. And to me, there's three branches of government. There's the executive, there's the legislative and judicial. And the, in order for the legislative to have any kind of power, we've got to unify it. And we've got to be able to, you know, push back. And one of the questions was, how do we get the department heads and stuff to? I would be very tough on them. They would have to come in and talk to us. You know, we do got to work together, but for too long, I feel that, you know, if, I think certain members are like, if you're in tight, then what happens to everybody else? And we've had those. When I first started here, it was like, you know, I was on the outside. And I'm hoping that, that as time goes on, we can work together and accomplish something that's important. You know, for too long, we have been divided. So I would like you to support me, just because I think this will bring the council together. One other point I wanted to bring up is that we're going to probably go through this process again in January. Because it's every two years, you review, you know, chairs, and you can reelect new leadership. And my thought was, hey, you know, like, vote me out.
Never done that twenty years ago.
No, we don't.
Committees are appointed by union, so they are two-year appointments, and that's part of the rules. The leadership positions potentially serve as a pleasure with the members.
Yeah, right, it's happened, right? Yeah, it's happened.
Well, that's it, I have no more questions in the meeting.
I might just like...
You got Alfredo behind you.
Oh, so you'd be willing to give up a position on the union?
Correct. There's nobody...
That's Alessa Frey.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Tom, you spoke about this body thing not being unified.
Yes.
Can you clarify what you mean by that and what you would do?
Differently than the previous leadership, because if you're pointing at President Pro Tem...
I think she was perfectly capable of answering her question.
So it's a lady against Corey.
Thank you.
I'm just curious as to your perspective on what that means, the reason for it, and then what you would do to...
Well, I think one of the reasons, one of the big reasons, I think, is that we come, we rush in here, we try to get a caucus meeting on a Wednesday, and we bail out. And then we have like a caucus meeting right before the meeting for a half hour. I would make the Wednesday's meetings more that we talk. I would try to do stuff that we maybe eat together. I would try to make us more of a team, that we want to work together, okay? I think we're all from different parts of the city, and we all are kind of strangers. One of the things I offered, and the only person took me up on the offer was Kelly. I would like to tour every ward. It's, you know, I represent the fifteen, but we're all part of a big city. And I don't think we do enough to find out what's going on in different parts of the city. When I did the walk in your part of the city, when we had the, all the shootings, not this summer, the summer of last. I went to your ward and I saw signs, street signs totally wiped out, you couldn't, you didn't know where you were. I was trying to follow my GPS, and I put the call in. I called Bill Trinone, said this, I took a picture and did it, because each, this problem is all over the city. And as a group, we could solve them a lot better by working together. And that's, I guess, one of the things I'm trying to do. I think, you know, I'm not accusing anybody of not doing that, but I think we got to do out more. One of the things I brought up in here was having a sunshine fund. That if somebody has a relative passed away, instead of going around, that there's something there that we can do it. You know, there's different ways we can do it, but I think morale of this group is important. I think the one time, when we point out the time, when we voted down the skyway, that was the first time we worked together. We had fourteen votes. Well, some people abstained, but we had fourteen people who were not in favor of that bond. And I thought it was a great thing, because the person where that skyway was going in, the council person, didn't want it. And we stuck together behind that person, didn't allow it to happen. So that's one of the ways that we're doing it.
How about Scott Coleman?
Okay, yeah, just to show our hands. For me. Okay, so, all right, it's majority, so... So when we call the question on the floor, we hope that the majority, you know, we don't have this debate again on the floor out there. Thank you. Thank you all for your support. Okay, so moving on to... Thank you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just have to get into that meeting safely, huh?
Right, so...
Can I make a suggestion, since it is seven o'clock and since I think you're going to be elected president pro temp? Do we have to necessarily, before the meeting, now decide on a majority leader?
Yeah, we should.
And that'll give us more...
I don't want to go through that. I mean, I personally don't want to go through that.
Why wouldn't we do it the same? Why wouldn't we...
No, here, 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 I think...
No, I'm just going to bring it out, that's a...
You know what? Let's just put a time...
So, membership wants to table this and do it...
On a Wednesday.
On a Wednesday caucus, or, right, so I, I think we should, we'll just take, we'll take... Okay, so let's, we'll resolve it now.
I'm going to make the motion, then we take care of this, any second.
Can we just set some time limits on it and crack the jacks at the same time?
Yeah. We'll do two minutes each.
Two minutes each, and how much is discussion?
It's fine, we've been late for a meeting before.
And then five minutes discussion. All right, so it's Mr. Robinson. Right, who's interested in, from what we know, okay? Okay, so we'll start with Ms. Farrell, you're...
All right, somebody else should keep time.
Two minutes, right?
Usually I prefer to stop watch for my own time. So the reason why I'm interested in this position is, first and foremost, I have a lot of experience in leadership on boards. I was elected on the school board to a leadership position by my peers, to every single leadership position. So for the three, four years I was on the school board, three years I was a leadership position. Within those leadership positions, I've done just about every possible thing, including running meetings, meeting with people. In my day job, I deal with legislation. I think an important part of this position is to make sure our processes and procedures are in place. I think moving forward, we have to look at the future and making sure that we have someone that is going to be here, that can really learn those processes and procedures, is very important. I have a legislative background, it's what I do every day. I work with bill language, I dig into bill language, I negotiate bill language. I'm very familiar with all angles of that, and I think that I could really hit the ground running with it. I also have some great ideas for some things that we could do differently. I think that we are, we have some amazing pieces to us as a council, but we need to work as a unit. And I think there's a lot of potential for that. I think the history has made it hard to do that, and some of those pieces are still there. I think past councils have had to deal with a lot more division than we have now. And I do think that we can come together, and I do think that we can be a force which matters. And then finally, I think that it's important to have diversity on our leadership team, and that includes having women on our leadership team. I think that my qualifications are the most important thing. I think I'm incredibly qualified without gender being included. But I think when you have a qualified person, you need to make sure that those pieces are there. And I have four seconds left, so...
Yield them to who?
Mr. Robinson.
So I am interested in running for the majority leader position. It's one of the first things, that I respect everyone's wisdom, knowledge and insight in this room. When I first got onto council, I did my best to try to learn from everybody. And in this majority leader position, I feel like that's what is what's going to be needed, is that no one has the golden key, no one has the golden key, I guess. But you really have to sit and listen to the expertise and knowledge of wisdom of each of the members. And also, I feel like this position is going to be a support to the present pro temp, in which there's going to be a lot of, as there should be, information, knowledge and sharing. And so there's no one monopoly on who knows more information than one other person. But in a majority leader position, I will do my best to make sure that there's a knowledge share between the present pro temp and the majority leader. Just a little bit background about me personally. I have master's degree in organizational leadership. At my church, I'm also a director of ministry, in which I ministry operations, where I control the operations of the church. I also sit on the board of Green Tech High School, which is one of the top schools here in the city. And so, you know, dealing with the community, the faith community, I know how to deal with people of diverse backgrounds. And so I think that is also crucial to this position. And I think that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. O'Brien.
I can't disagree with anything that either of the other folks have indicated about their qualifications. I think they're both qualified. I think gender is one thing, but I don't think it's the only thing. I believe I have experience, this is my, oh, eighteenth year on the council, well, finishing my eighteenth year on the council. My background is, I am an attorney, retired from the, mostly worked with the state health department, worked for some other state agencies and worked with county government. I believe I have the organizational skills. I have volunteered, and I'm president of one not-for-profit board, the International Center of the Capital Region. And I've worked on a number of others. I think I have the ability to work with everybody. Sometimes I disagree with the administration, not always, most of the time I do not. But I don't think any of us should feel constrained necessarily to not, to be quiet when we think there's a problem that has to be addressed. I don't, and I just touch you, I really don't think the council is a divided body. I've been on it for eighteen years, I've seen us getting disputes over certain things, but by and large, I think it's a cohesive group. And I think we can certainly learn from each other, as has been pointed out. But I offer my experience of eighteen years and my, oh, yes, I just want to bring up one other thing. I was, you know, when I call and spoke to people, I was asked by them, am I going to run again for my council seat? And I was honored, and I said, no. So that would give me a... give me a maximum tenure of two years, um, I think two years is a significant period of time, and, uh, granted, you would have to go through a discussion again, uh, but just bear that in mind, I, how about, I'm at, thank you.
So five minutes for my, I can get out a motion and let people know how much time is left, so people are aware.
Okay, we're just going to go, five minutes, uh, any questions for the candidates?
I have a question, actually, to all the candidates, um, as many of you are aware, independence is very important, I believe in checks and balances, as the legislative body to, to execute, uh, can you give an example of when you were independent, or spoke out against the administration, or the issue that you were passionate about?
Well, I, I can give one from years, years back, where we didn't have a system for raiding streets, I did go on and looked up what DOT did, and they had a system in place for raiding streets, and the administration then was not, at me, at least initially, willing to go on board, but we did finally persuade the administration to go on board to adopt a quantifiable metric for scoring streets, and that's been followed ever since then, it's not a perfect system, but it was better than, than what we had, and recently, uh, I know I've, um, had some questions in terms of budgets, I know I, you know, went along, I would not go along with the, the Skyway, um, and I believe at times I even asked a lot of questions about the streetlight purchase, I ultimately went along with it, but I did ask questions, and I think that's, was what I would, what I would continue to do, ask, ask questions and try to be reasonable.
To answer your question, and I think one major piece in the interest of time is the Skyway, um, bond that I was in favor of, because I felt like it wasn't equitable, um, because there are many parks in our districts, and I felt like that money could be used somewhere else, and that's what I decided to convince that.
Um, I, what I'd say is, I obviously also voted the same way on Skyway, one of the reasons why I voted that way is, one, um, my council colleague who has that in her ward was against it, and it mattered to her, and I think that's important to listen to where people represent, and another reason is, there was absolutely no presentation directly to the council about the budget issues, which I brought up over and over again, and that to me is an essential thing, um, when you're talking about, like, working against the administration, it's two sides of it, and one of them is holding them accountable, and that does not always happen in meetings, in fact, where that should happen is when you're talking to them to say, no, you need to come to us and give us the information, and I think that that's something I brought up over and over again, because I get, well, we gave up, we did a public presentation, not going to them, if you want my vote, you need to come and talk to us where we are.
Okay.
Just so people know, we have two minutes left.
Yeah, I have a question, time, because we do meet with leadership, uh, on Tuesdays at 11:00 a.m., is that a problem for any of the candidates?
I, so, I can do a weekly meeting, I would need it to be at a different time, um, as Richard worked for the legislature, who knows, like, Tuesdays are not great days during session.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And I believe that they're on different days, so I, because Richard was able to do it for six years.
They were on Tuesdays, and then it was changed to Tuesdays when the mayor started coming, so it's not a fifth day.
No, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
I can definitely do a weekly meeting, could I do Tuesday at 11:00, if it's Tuesday at 11:00, that's the only day in time, then that would be a problem for me, but I have no issue with the weekly meeting.
Got you, anybody else, no?
As long as it's, uh, it's a regularly scheduled meeting, then yes, I can, you know, do what's necessary to be there.
Okay.
And I retire.
I'm not asking you to retire, you got the grain, you just put them off.
Uh, wait another minute, if there's.
And also, part of that is, if, if it ever comes up, like E and A, Richard would fill in. Come for me at E and A meetings, so President Pro Temp, if they're ever both sick, the majority leader would, you'd request the majority leader be at that E and A meeting.
I know, I mean, personally, I don't, it's something I've actually talked to my coworkers, my family about, if I'm able to make the time.
Okay, everyone satisfied, ready to vote, or?
Can I, can I understand the process? So, if nobody has a majority, what happens, you know, in this straw poll, what happens then?
We start talking about each other.
Right, my, my thought was, vote, the lowest vote getter gets removed from the process, and then there are two folks left, and then we vote again.
That's if it's a tie.
Five, five. No, she said if it's a tie.
I don't think you can get a vote, as long as you got the votes.
The majority, the majority, right.
Corey would have to break the tie.
Right, and from, from the onset, if a person has the majority of the vote, it's, that's the person that we select.
If it's, even if they don't get eight.
Yeah, I mean, for this process, it's just a straw poll.
What if, what if there's any motions, you go from there, see if there's time.
You need eight votes, I mean, if you want formally agree that drop the vote to the first ballot, or in the past, we had, not before my time, there was, remember one year, where the president pro temp position was up, and it was a three-way race, before Joe's time also, and, uh, it was meeting to meeting, it was the same vote until finally it was broken, that was when David Fornell, Fornell settled, and Amber, way back when, but, so you can, you just keep on voting, you know, if you hold a vote tonight, I'm going to get the majority, do it the next meeting.
I think also, but how about us, we are the three people that are running, in the interest of moving things forward, we can each make the commitment that if, if we're the lowest vote getter, then we can, then we release our votes to the other members, and people can move forward, I don't think it's difficult at council to be divided in leadership and do this meeting after meeting after meeting, let's do this tonight, if I'm the lowest vote getter, I'm happy to drop out.
And I'll make that.
Okay, so, with that being said, uh, number of members voting for, uh, Ms. Farrell, show a hand, this is one, two, three, four, five.
Wait, five?
Okay, that's five, uh, numbers for Mr. O'Brien? One, two, three, four, Mr. O'Brien gets four, the number supporting Mr. Robinson? One, two, five.
Have some raise your hands.
Raise your hands. You got six, yeah, you got six. You got six, okay, yeah, all right, so that's six, so, the lowest.
So I will drop out, and then you'll do another ballot.
Right, okay, so, that being said, uh, members supporting Ms. Farrell, show a hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, a question about the process, so if Councilman Robinson had the majority of the votes.
You need eight.
Right, we need, yeah, Ms. Scott said you need eight.
Oh, even in this setting, I thought you were referring to in the, on the floor.
Yeah, because if you get the majority of the votes in here, we agree that they will be supported out on the floor.
Is that, I thought, my understanding was that, we're voting, dropping a person, and then voting again, that's, that was, that's my understanding, that's what, all right, so, I'm sorry, where was I?
Jenny, you were asking for the bar.
Okay, support for Ms. Farrell, show a hand, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight right there. Okay, that's, I mean, that's the majority, that's the eight you would need, all right, because there's only seven left, all right, so, uh, Ms. Farrell?
Do you want this?